I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
All meeting to order. Want to strike change on the agenda? They got at the bottom says set date and time for the county budget. We need to scratch that off. We have it up above.
You had said it, and I had already said it, so we didn't need it down there twice. I didn't know you'd put it down there too.
Scratch out. Okay, with that change, motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Con, both carry. Approve the minutes. Ten seven.
Make the motion to approve minutes from ten seven as printed looks correct to me.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Both carry. General public. Nobody here, Ben.
Morning.
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 How you doing today?
Good. Supposed to be nice this week. Actually get a week without rain.
Oh.
Don't tell anybody. I've got a couple pay vouchers on the agenda. The first is to approve voucher number two for project LC one seven one, one oh nine, for thirty-one hundred dollars, twenty-nine, or thirty-one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents. This is the final pay voucher for the eight by eight box that they did over by Thor.
On Washington.
On Washington, yes.
So that's everything, no?
That's everything.
Closes it out?
That closes that project out.
Everything's good, looks good?
Yep, we got grass establishing pretty nice there.
It's already.
Danny went back out, I think, last week and cast where it was a little thin.
I'll make the motion to approve the pay voucher number two for three thousand one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents.
Second.
Oh, go ahead, Rose.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both carry.
The second pay voucher is pay voucher number one for project LC three nine three zero zero six. This is the project that they're working on right now up on Georgia Avenue, which would be southwest of both. We replaced a bridge with a twin ten by ten box. We've been fighting water on this one. But contractor is moving pretty quickly. If we wouldn't have gotten rain towards the tail end of last week, he probably would have finished on Friday. Because we got the rain and it pushed him out until this week. So hopefully, we'll have the road open back up for traffic, I'm guessing tomorrow.
Good.
So it'll be just gravel through the winter then, over the?
This is on gravel road.
Oh, it is on gr- I'm sorry, I was thinking just west of town. Alright, so gravel will stay gravel.
Yes.
Perfect.
Well, this is, uh... Well, long story short, what's it gonna be left after this payment then?
Uh, after this payment, we should have about twenty thousand left, twenty-one thousand left.
That's retainage and?
That's covering retainage and everything. They're quite a bit further than what this pay voucher covers. But this voucher covers what they had done for work through Wednesday.
Well, I'm making a motion to approve the voucher number one to Midwest Contracting for the project stated LC three nine three zero zero six for a hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty cents.
I'll second Eric's motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both carry.
And then the last item was one that Peggy and I had talked about to set a time and date for a budget amendment. We have some equipment that recently got delivered that was carryover from last year, as well as these construction projects, which were obligated last year that we have to roll forward.
So it was a technicality from the first go around?
Yeah, it's all carryover, I mean, there's nothing.
We just gotta move the money.
We just gotta move the money. And it's basically, it's those items, as well as pulling forward from our budget last year, the rock money that we didn't spend, as well as adding the rock money that we got from FEMA this year.
We don't have anything?
Do you want to just set it for next week?
No.
You can't go two weeks out?
How far out?
November eighteen.
November eighteen.
November? November eighteen to here.
Ten days notice, I gotta notify other departments to see if somebody else wants to put in their... That's because they went down heavy.
How about, from Peggy's research, how about?
I would?
Eight thirty-five.
Eight thirty-five, November eighteen for the budget amendment or secondary row.
That sounds great.
Okay, there we go, and that's as quick as we can have it, so we're not loitering.
And Peggy will calm back down if we do that. I'll second that.
Well, she doesn't have a whip.
There you go, yeah.
It's not that fast, you know, I'm never one to... Takes a while.
God damn.
There we go, man. We didn't get it wound up.
Tell her that voice, so they don't even think of it. Some good things don't have a whip.
And that's for all county departments.
Yes, anybody else could be included in that one. Whereas last one, we kind of pushed it through for conservation, so they could get their buildings paid for.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both carry.
Then there's a couple, I'm just looking at the claims for advanced drainage, just tile intakes. Then the Forterra, is that Cree-Tex?
Forterra is the same as Cree-Tex, that's concrete pipe for right ways.
Some stuff that we're picking up?
Advanced drainage is intakes, tees, hickin bottoms. We've been doing quite a bit of tile repair, and quite a bit of drainage district tile repair. Those require larger fittings that we don't typically carry in the yard.
Keeping stock?
Yeah.
Alright, I was just snooping. Perfect.
You tend to keep some metal pipe culverts on hand?
Yes. Yep, we tend to carry fifteen inches usually the smallest that we carry, because that's the smallest that we allow for driveway entrances. Last week, we took delivery on some twenty-four and thirty-six inch pipe, which we typically don't carry. But we've got a driveway up by Brad Gate for Lynn Schreiber that requires a thirty-six inch. So we had to put that in for an order, and we were out of twenty-four inch, so.
Fifteen's about the smallest.
Fifteen's the smallest that we go.
Okay.
I know Drainage District, they typically want like a ten or twelve inch tin whistle. Brown Supply carries that and Fort Dodge. Sometimes you can get it up here at Baumgar's or else these guys order it from the same supplier that I do, and they usually just keep it in their yard. Like Jensen, I think he's usually, you know, he'll put a few orders in. I know Marso does the same thing. Because there's a lot of times, my guy will show up, drop his load for us off or his partial load, and then he's going there to dump the rest.
Okay, anything else with Ben for right now? You getting anything hot, heavy for a while?
Right now? Nope. Stick around a little bit if you want. Okay.
Any other claims?
Alright, we've got claims of six hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight cents, and drainage of seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine, twenty-six.
What I had, I second.
Any questions or any other?
Well, the only question I have?
Who really knows?
What's that? Wait, um, I'm assuming it was a funeral that we had? That was, um, paid like two dollars, I thought we paid fifteen hundred, but maybe that was for something different. And there's...
No, I don't remember that.
I don't, but I seen it in there. I did...
Want the book back?
Yeah.
About the third page. He's got a little marker on the...
That was on the transportation. That too is...
Yeah, transportation.
That's expensive.
They have to take them to Des Moines, yeah, for an autopsy.
And then bring them back.
It adds up, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we have...
Well, both of these were...
They go to Des Moines for...
Those two are transportation.
Yeah, or another one?
Yeah. Maybe we've raised our, what we pay, too, I don't know.
What's the name of the company?
Harris, but two different. Transportation and Harris. Yeah, it's Harris Funeral Home.
And you didn't have anything through the VA? It's actually two, I think they're two different.
Yeah, I didn't see that one.
I know those are two different deals, but what are they?
The Harris Funeral Home comes from Community Services. So it would be someone who couldn't afford to pay for a funeral, so they're going by their guidelines.
Okay, well, okay.
Here's the actual... Yeah. Well, the transportation is no matter what, you gotta prove it. But this particular claim is from... Community Services or Social Services or whatever you want to call it.
This one too?
Well, these ones live it on general basis. So it would have been just transportation claims, we have to pay them no matter who they are. You want to see the actual claim itself?
No.
These are still names.
This?
That one wasn't still named.
No, that's fine, but that makes sense, this one would be because of the medical examiner involved.
Yeah, they have to haul it down for an autopsy, and then the autopsy was like two thousand, some dollars.
So there was two different ones.
Okay, I think that.
And it does add up.
I think that kind of explains it.
And they did budget for that, when they put their budget together, they put some money in there just in case. You never know if you're gonna have ten, or then go all or no.
Okay, any other discussion on the claim? You have a motion, second on the end.
Go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both carry. Okay, thank you. Okay, next one is for Recorder's Quarterly Report. Accept and place on file for the quarterly report through the recorder's office.
I'll make a motion to accept and place on file the Recorder's Quarterly Report for nine thirty nineteen.
Second that. Any other discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Both carry.
Well, here's the copy right there for your show.
I can say both.
Well, yeah, if you want to have one for you and...
Veterans Affairs Quarterly Report.
I'll make the to accept the quarterly report for Veterans Affairs.
I'd second, and I assume everything is in order on it, we didn't...
Jackie, do you mention anything out of order? I see that there are names on this one, so you may want to destroy your copy.
Yep.
Have to be done. And this is the successful one for five minutes.
Let me start marking off with the names.
I think you leave some on for you guys, for the usual.
I'll just turn mine in, so you can run it through the shredder.
I'll let you...
Uh-huh.
Chairs on there, I'm passing back to Peggy and...
Yep, I can run it through the shredder.
Make sure they're plugged in. Okay, you got a motion to accept it. Veterans Fair Report.
Yes.
Second.
Yeah, I have one.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Both carry. Okay, Sheriff's side. Sheriff's Quarterly Report.
We need to go over this with a fine tooth comb, or?
You shouldn't have made that comment earlier. Stoked the fire.
Good thing you had some regular money.
I'll make a motion to accept and place on file the Sheriff's Quarterly Report.
I will second Eric's motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both carry.
Who's your next, Peggy? Is it all good? I guess so. Yeah, two hundred and sixty-four dollars. Compared to what the sheriff can do, he picked up all the more pot cans than I can.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept the auditive support.
It's upside down, he's under distress. Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both carry. Okay, discussion next. Roof hire of Penny Porter's part-time jailer, retroactive to the seventh, at a rate of fourteen eighty-four an hour.
I'll make that motion for the hire of Penny Porter.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Um, I think the, our thing was is that, I'll have to double check it on the numbers in front of me, but she's already certified jailer. I think that wage is for her non-certified, so she's already...
Well, the rate may be different.
The rate may be different, and...
So can we amend that and make it pending her twenty hour, didn't you say she had to do her twenty hour re...
Yes. Yep, she had to go back to the twenty hour to get her certification current.
Re-certified?
Right, and then she had experience previously from working here too, so I think that was one of the other discussions we had, would be to see if we could pick her up on the scale, on the step a little bit quicker, being she's already got experience. I mean, obviously, things have changed a lot, twenty-five years since she's worked here, but fingerprinting and some of them, walking around the jail, and a lot of it is still the same, so.
Same jail it was.
Yeah, same jail, I mean, obviously, technology has changed a lot, but, you know, she, I know, they already commented just in the three or four shift, she's already worked, that she's way further along than what the typical new hire would be.
So, do I need to amend my motion?
If you want to change something on it, you can use it.
How would you word that?
How would you word that?
What number are you picking? I mean, you guys are more familiar with it than...
Yeah, I'm thinking that there's, I want to say it's like sixteen eighty-something, I think, is what the, you know, for someone with, who's trained and with years' experiences typically, I think it's somewhere in that range is what their top pay is for a part-time jailer.
Do you want to use Chris real quick, or?
Yeah, or I, I mean, I have it set at my desk, I just didn't bring it with me, I guess I can put the three on that part of it.
We have, we have another...
We have, we have a little hour.
Going, yeah?
Four hours.
You have to stay with that time, yeah?
Still got a hole in front of your building?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Probably maybe we fill that, and then I guess it's raining, didn't it?
You must have done something really seriously wrong there, because they've taken, taken a long time to get up with that.
They must be digging up those dead bodies.
Well, you guys approved letting, what, that one section of streets to run off the LEC or something?
Strip the street lights, yeah.
They gotta put conduit or something across the street there now, and it's a mess. Something's gotta go this way, and something's gotta go this way.
Sheriff's whole street, you'd do it again next week.
Exactly.
That's what Fort Dodge does. They lay black copper concrete, and next year, they tear it all back up again. Don't make sense.
You want to do that down in front of Oakdale Tire? I'm not saying, or I don't want to be on record saying that, but they didn't like the color of their stain for the concrete.
Really?
You'd be amazed to see how much concrete gets dumped up at the quarry at four o'clock. You could put a lot of concrete down in places. I mean, there'll be times they'll come up with half a truck. Rather than hauling back Fort Dodge, they just dump it in piles, like, I mean, bucks a yard.
Yeah, the only way you could go that, you know what I mean, go with it.
I told numerous people, I said, for pressure conformant, you know, if you have all those patches in your driveway or whatever.
Oh, yeah.
Some at Christmas land, they're trying to get the sidewalk in a ramp for a building, so.
Just get it ready, and then when they...
Running on down, yeah. Well, I mean, how can I do all different colors to roll?
Yeah, what difference does it make, right? It's Christmas, multi-colors, right?
It doesn't care what color it is.
What number did you come up with?
Okay, so starting certified starts off at fifteen thirty-two, and then after two years of experience, it goes up to sixteen seventy-eight.
So what number are we looking at?
Sixteen seventy-eight?
Um, I guess what I would propose is we probably should make sure she gets through the six months probation. So what about if we do the first six months at sixteen seven, or fifteen seventy-six? Oh, wait, fifteen thirty, fifteen thirty-two, I'm sorry. We start off fifteen thirty-two for the first six months, and if everything goes good after the first six months, means she's got previous experience as a jailer, then we can maybe go up to the sixteen seventy-six. Does that sound reasonable?
Okay.
What's for us?
I'm gonna amend my motion for the approval hire of Penny Porter as a part-time jailer for ten seven, for five months probation at fifteen thirty-two.
Five months?
Six months, excuse me, six months. My six looked like a five. Six months of fifteen thirty-two, and then after the completion of that, bump it to sixteen seventy-eight.
I like it.
Sounds good, I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both carry.
Okay, now is that voted on the amendment? Now we need the original amendment, then. The original motion's hanging out there still, isn't it? Doesn't he take, you have an original motion, make an amendment, then you vote on the amendment, and then the original?
Well, he canceled it, so is it still there, or do we?
It is still.
Okay, well, let's have a vote on the original amendment.
Okay.
Just call for that one.
Not the original, the original motion, which is going to be voted on because...
Amendment, the original motion.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Original motion and hiring her at fourteen eighty-four.
I'm not gonna tell you how to vote, but...
All in favor? Of opposed?
Opposed, no.
Okay.
Gotta get this right.
Okay, now moving on. Pro hire of March Hood as full-time jailer, likely ten nineteen, at a rate of seventeen sixty.
See, you just have to look at... Okay, I know, I was... I'll make the motion, do this stuff first, to hire a March Hood.
I was gonna accept the motion.
I, I thought that was, uh, back to ten nineteen at a rate of seventeen dollars and sixty cents per hour.
I'm gonna, I'll step out there with you, I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both carry.
I only said, wait a minute.
Yeah, thank you.
While you're here, and jailer-wise, how does that get you situated in the jail personnel?
We should be sitting a lot better now, yep, um, I, we're expecting...
You're sleeping most of the nights now again?
Yeah. Hopefully, I don't have to work anymore, which is... I think we talked earlier, we have had through the month, October, we brought in a gal from Palo Alto County to fill us in on some days, and then one from Cassoot County's helping us out in October, but we're hoping that by first of November, Penny should be up and going by herself by then. So I'm hoping that through November, we shouldn't need to bring any outside help, so we should be sitting pretty good that way. So I think we can get by after that.
Good.
Are you done with your guy that you were working with on the...
Wally or something like that?
Wally, structuring Wally.
Um, we're primarily done. He submitted to us his policies and procedures. Roger Bennett and I are in the process of going through them and kind of tweaking them and finding some things. He's still offering to come up and help us do some training for the jailers. Truthfully, we've been doing some other stuff in the jail, because we've been, apparently, we found out from the fire marshal that it's no longer permissible to have duct tape on ductwork, it has to be switched over to the aluminum tape.
Oh, boy.
So Roger and I spent two days last week, our entire shift back in the jail, in plain clothes, wrapping up the duct tape, replacing with aluminum tape. So we haven't really had time to just sit down and actually dedicate to just start going through the policy manual, making sure it meets our, you know, what we want. So I would say he's primarily done. I don't anticipate bringing him back for anything, but I guess that's, if there's something were to pop up, I guess I'd like to leave at least the door open, but I just, at this point, I don't really see it.
You still consider that that whole project with him was helpful to get things where you wanted to be?
Yeah, he brought in a lot of new insight, you know, with updating with the policies and procedures. And I know Dean and I and Roger are going to update school for jail in February that's supposed to be just for sheriffs and administrators, and so I'm guessing that's gonna be geared more towards, you know, case law and policies and stuff like that, so we can hopefully get a different perspective on things, which, you know, we were behind on, and that's the stuff Wally knew right off the top of his head, you know, what the new changes are. Back in September, Roger and I both went to a one-week, now we're certified jailers now, because we had to be certified jailers in order to be administrators of the jail. And there were definitely some things we didn't need, such as handcuffing. We didn't need a whole class on handcuffing after twenty-two years, if I don't want to handcuff somebody, I should probably just call it quits. But we did pick up quite a few different things, you know, on how to handle grievances among, in the jail, and how there's different policies and stuff on that, that we were way behind on, and that Wally did bring some perspective in on that in his experience from West County. So yes, I would say it was definitely helpful having him come in and bringing the new perspective and how he handles things.
The whole jail program is setting better now than it was.
I feel a lot better.
And you feel good moving forward.
I feel that there is light at the end of the tunnel.
Okay, good, because that was quite a headache for you not very long ago.
It's still a headache, but it's...
Yeah, well, I saw it was gonna be a headache.
It's not a migraine.
Okay, good. That's good to know, good to know.
Yeah.
All right. I got her, she's going down.
Sounds good.
Down the coast going on that.
Will do.
Figure out the EMA equipment in there, too.
You don't have EMA over there as well?
I think so. I don't know, we'll have to call up Telgon and see how big of a spot they have.
Guy that's running through, doing it, and I would think he would have an idea what Cassoot, and they got probably have more equipment than we, huh?
Couple of them.
Do you have coffee, you think so?
What's in your arm?
Yeah.
Cap, do you need coffee, you're looking off?
Yeah.
Want the news reported accurately?
What you need to know is how tall are the doors? I mean, the, the EMA trailer is really tall, so that's gonna have to be taller than that. You thought you had a twenty-one yard tall.
Yours, I don't ask you.
I think I might have one, that...
I mean, if you had fourteen... You'd have it. Yeah, I mean, it would compensate us out.
The other thing, that too, we have to...
How are you even...
We have the D's, and then when the... So, having...
How old is your...
My mom, this is the trip with my mom.
You stole that before you...
It's dang good.
Yeah, mainly, we need to figure out.
Well, good luck with that.
Yeah.
She up to the trip? Are you a big... You and your mom?
Yeah, it's just my mom.
Good luck.
I don't have a clue what's the weather like, dude.
It's like, it's summer.
It is.
It's woolish?
It's a little bit warmer. Everything I've gotten is the lows are gonna be like forty-eight, forty-nine, and the highs are gonna be in the high sixties. But, right now, and then possible chance of rain. Each day has like a twenty percent right now, chance of rain, from what I've catch on the internet, and I hope not, but who knows?
I know your mom is that. Well, and really, I just get to say, it would be the new one that has...
Well, we have the air systems at airports, because I'm not gonna, you know, it's just, plus you get...
Like, I know Dave did survey for us, we just haven't...
Probably will speed things up, yes.
Oh, well.
Yep.
Okay, the next house there for the next meeting.
Yeah, we got courts, I gotta get some meetings.
All right.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay. Got you up?
We hit the stop, check.
Well, good morning. Um, I have with me Clarence Hoffman, he is with ICAP, which is our county insurance provider, and I, we don't have anything real big this morning, but Clarence has something nice that I think you would all appreciate that he would like to present to you.
Well, it's good.
Yeah.
So, I'll turn it over to good news.
I'll turn it over to Clarence.
I come when it's good news, when it's bad news, I just say, Scott, go take it.
It ought to, too.
Can't beat that.
That arrangement works really, really good. So, first want to tell you a thank you for being a customer. You've been a customer for six years, and, uh, things have gone pretty much the way we had anticipated. Uh, at the end of six years, if everything goes right, you get a dividend. And, uh, the ones that have been there for a long time, they've all got their dividends. Your six years are up, and so Peggy here's eleven thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars that you can use as you please.
You notice he says Peggy?
Thank you.
We give them extra money if they don't have any losses. And it's your program, you know, you're buying from yourself. This program's put together, you own it, you have a percentage of ownership proportion to your premium to the total premium. So, one of the reasons they want us to deliver the checks is they want us to ask you, how happy are you with the program? What are some changes that you would like to recommend? It's yours. We have picked up lots of ideas and made lots of changes. Uh, the last few meetings, we've maybe made most of them, we're not getting any ideas. Are you having any issues or suggestions?
I know, I, I don't, personally, I don't, our, our, uh, county workers are coded when they're blading a road, they're listed as road construction workers, which, there's a big difference between a guy sitting in a blade versus a guy that's working on a highway, you know, where they're driving sixty-five mile an hour past them. I mean, the, the, the chance of a claim or a loss is quite a bit higher for the, the gentleman that's out there with a safety vest on, working in a construction site, versus my guy who's moving at twelve miles an hour.
Yeah, a cab with four workers, bars, right.
Yep. But I, I, I understand that's the only column that is comparable.
Yeah, that is determined by the classifications they have. What they'll have to do, they'll have to go into the NCS Rating Bureau and ask for new classification. It's a long process. We can ask for that.
That, that would be my, my only wish, I guess, is that there was...
That's, that's really a rate factor rather than a loss factor.
Right.
I, I will tell you that some of the counties have complaints and said, hey, your loss control people are asking for too much. Paul Hoffman is, you know Paul? Paul's a good engineer. And when we first started with Paul, Paul was not happy with that. He says, you're just micromanaging us. Today, Paul, well, he wrote an article for one of your magazines. He is the greatest advocate for the loss control of anybody. The premium for his county has gone down by about a third. And Paul would say, hey, those stupid things that I thought we shouldn't do, that we're doing, they're the reason. So, and we've, we've had an issue, I don't know what, which division it was, here. One of my, one of the guys working with me came up and met with you, and he was, he was very pleased. But I think it's very important that the board support the engineer, the sheriff, and recommendations they make for safety. And you get your recommendations from the loss control people, and if you want training films or extra meetings, ask them, they'll give it to you.
I know when they were here, Ben and I were very concerned, because there was nothing we could do about our mod factors, because of the fact that we have a claim out there, a couple of claims, that are larger, until those work their way through the system and go off, um, there really wasn't any way to...
You're stuck with this, yeah.
I mean, we know rolling future, we can do some training and some things to make it better, but we can't take those off, it just takes time.
It takes time, you're exactly right. You know, you're on a three-year rolling average with the last year not counting, so, uh...
Yeah, the best thing you can do is, is train and plan for the future, so you don't add something big. Just as soon as that one's ready to roll off, you're not rolling something on, and then that's when you start seeing big div, big dividends.
It's unfortunate that they don't look at it as like the law of averages. You throw out the year with the high claims, throw out the year with the lowest claims, and you take the average of the flat. You know, then if you do have an outlier claim, it, it, it doesn't blackball you for the next three years, where you're penalized for it, but, I mean, I understand what they're doing.
Yeah, they, they've set up a system, and I heard what you've said many times, and there's validity to it. But it does work. And when you get over those three years, we come, Scott comes in and say, hey, your workroom's comp is down thirty thousand dollars. Say it worked, so. But if they're oversell us, and we have one loss control person who is oversell us, he's retired now, but, um, he, he was picky. And, uh, we didn't like that, and he's retired. Okay?
The key thing is finding out what the problems are, and then training people from that. That's always the thing that we're cut. You gotta find what, because a lot of times people be doing things that they're not thinking about, because they just do it automatic.
There are two things, finding those and then creating a culture with the workers, where they help each other.
They buy into it.
Yeah, they buy into it. And, and if they see somebody doing something that might lead to an injury, they call it to their attention.
Yeah.
Because, uh, we want everyone to go home without being injured. If nobody ever got injured, you wouldn't need us, so we don't want to get quite that good. But, the idea is, you know, get everybody home safe. Nobody wins when someone gets hurt.
A lot of times the younger ones don't realize, you can get hurt now, and then twenty years, you're, you're still...
Pay the price later.
You do, you do. And a lot of them think, oh, I'm, you know, Superman, I can do anything.
Of course, yeah.
And we've taken advantage of, uh, they've offered to, like, renew our policy and procedures and stuff, which is awesome.
Yeah.
Because ours needed to be updated.
We have an HR person, Lisa Mark.
Yep.
She will come out, she's, she's good, right? Every place I go, they love Lisa. Uh, can find a few others they don't like so well.
Yep.
And that's good.
Yeah, no.
Financially, the program's doing really well. Uh, we have about, uh, four times as much money in reserve for premium exposure than insurance companies. Insurance companies, if they have a thousand dollars in premium, they have to have at least three hundred and thirty-three thousand in reserve. We, instead of having less than that amount, we have got three times our premium in reserve. So, we are fortified times better, have more cushion. We have a reinsurance of seven hundred and fifty thousand. A lot of insurance companies have reinsurance at a couple of million, so we have that safety. When we started this program, in liability, we said we would never raise the rate. We've been in this over thirty years, the liability rates that we started with are still the same rate. Now, you may be paying more because you have more stuff to insure, but our base rates have never changed in our liability rates. Workroom comp obviously goes with experienced buildings, they're a little bit different, too. But the liability was the thing that was killing cities and counties when this program was started, and we said it never changed, and we've lived up to, I didn't, I, I haven't, I didn't believe we could do this. We have done it for over thirty years. And the reason we've done it is because these people have cooperated in loss control. We have fewer claims. And when we have claims, we have nurses who work with them to get them back to work or to another job quicker. And in that process, if they're oversell us and moving someone to a different spot, let us know, we'll review it. So. And that's my story, I'm sticking by it.
Well, we appreciate it very much.
Yeah, yeah. And I also maybe should tell you one more thing. There's a company out there that goes to counties, and they say, hey, if you bid your insurance, we want to bid. Very seldom does a county bid. In thirty years, we have one county that left us. They got misinformation, they were sorry, they left, they come back. We have eighty-one counties in this, that we're doing business with. There are ten counties that are another pool. There are three that self-insure, and then there are five that are still with a traditional insurance company. So, I think that speaks pretty well for the program. The insurance market, as Scott can tell you, it gets very competitive, then all of a sudden it gets very loose in what they take. One county went out for bid, and they bid when the market was very competitive. They had a competitor that came in with a lower price. They've been in this program for quite a while, they liked the stability, they liked the broader coverage, they liked the fact that there were eighty-one other counties, and so they staked. The bad thing is, the newspaper was there, and wrote an article that they did not accept the lowest bid. And so, they had to justify it, and we came in and explained it all, and the second article came, the newspaper quieted it down. Uh, because we think our story's good, you own it. It's messed up, it's yours. And, uh, if it's messed up, it's more than likely us that messed it up for you. So, that's why we want to talk to you, and if there's an issue, we want to know. So, with that, we're done.
So, I got a question on this dividend, and thank you. You said that's a six-year...
You get it at the end of six years.
Okay. Is that every six years that you're involved in this program?
No, no, no.
It's the first six years?
First six years. But what, what they do is, the first six years, we've actually reduced our premium, but for the first six years, they use the higher premium. And if your experience is good, then you get dividend. And your experience is...
Sort of like a tax refund. We basically probably already paid this money, so we're getting it back.
Well, what it is here, it's an overpayment.
Yeah. Well, thank you for being very forthright about that.
Yeah.
Making sure what your tax refund is.
Yeah, it's an overpayment, and, uh, we know it, but it's still, it's still more competitive than where you were before.
So, does this put us, the, the premium has dropped then?
Your premium stayed the same, but we just gave you a dividend. Next year, we don't know what your premium will be, it'll be based on your experience, and there is a possibility there could be a dividend again. Last time the dividends went out, there were three consecutive dividends. If the experience, not just with this, but with all the county is good, then there'll be another dividend next year. I'd like to think we can come back here three times.
Oh, that'd be fine.
We'd like, we'd welcome you.
Nice people.
But does a, does a premium go down at this point? Or is that, it's...
You also get a premium credit, which that, or doesn't come in a check.
Probably go up, go up, because our mod factor is not good.
That's three things, three here.
Yeah, your workroom's comp, if your mod is going up...
Right, which...
But there is a, uh, credit that's given, that Clarence just mentioned, and that has, um, it comes in a voucher that we actually subtract off of the gross premium that comes. So, it's sort of a, a credit that is used immediately.
Right.
And that has increased, um, over the last renewal.
There was even one on the last time you...
Right.
Yeah, and that one you always get, and then this one is a plus, that you can give the first three years, so. But it, it's, like I say, it's your program, and if I were to criticize the board, and we know the heck of a good board, I'd say they've got too much money in reserve. But it's your money, it's not an insurance company or stock office money. It's your money, and it's there as a cushion. I will also tell you that there was something in the, uh, Deloitte Register where the board went to Michigan and to Florida for a meeting, and they could have had the meeting in Deloitte. But they reinsure, and the reinsurance board is in Michigan, and so they went to Michigan rather than have them come here. And they stayed at a place that is maybe a little nicer than the American Inn, which you've got a nice hotel here. Uh, it's maybe a little nicer. Some towns don't have a nice hotel like that. I was in one town, and I spent the first hour after I got there killing flies, before I could go to sleep. Didn't have that problem here, so that's nice, that's a nice. But anyway, that, that floated around, that board, hey, they don't get paid, so they get to go on a strip.
Yeah.
So, and like I say, the board is there, Ken Belbury spends his winters in Florida, and so it's a treat for them to fly to Florida. There's some cheap flights to Florida. Uh, we go down there for a while, and fly down there for a hundred and seventy-five bucks, ten apples, so. And like I say, that's out there. I say they can serve them. One of you might be on the board, and certainly you deserve a good trip, uh, to go to a nice place for a meeting for the time you put for it, so.
So, I want to say thank you to Cora, she's been with, you've been through this with me for, when we started, it was you and I and Carl.
You called, yeah. You called and said, hey, we'd like to look into this, and, you know, I try to be there, I will...
Yeah, I like the consistency, it's nice to have, and Scott, too, to have the same person helping you out.
We've not had any problems with the agent. I can tell you that we have some agents that to get the reports in, it's three or four notes out to them. You have got a good agency. When we started, that, I knew of their agency, they had a reputation. You selected the right one.
Thank you.
All right, Jim.
Thank you, Scott, thank you.
We'll see you at a conference. By the way, I do have two guys who are gonna start helping me. By the way, I do have two guys who are gonna start helping me.
Just nine of them.
Because, uh...
Think about retiring.
I, I think I'm getting close. Well, life makes I've been there.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm gone.
And some of the workers think I retire a little bit too, to go to Florida for a couple of years.
I told you something about that, I'm, you deserve the information.
Gotta find someone to retire to.
Thing I wanted to.
You gotta remember.
Get on, that you're aware of on that. As a possible addition to that.
I guess.
And you've had a good board, we haven't, uh, haven't read anything, but you're board. Our city council presented by Madison. Don't read good stuff. They don't have a clerk like you have an auditor, Peggy knows what she's doing.
I'm in trouble a lot of time.
She was president of the organization for you here and did a good job.
And I'll, uh, we'll get that broken out by department, so.
I already still feign to bend that I would do that, it's a big portion of it, so.
Can't be all Peggy's money, sorry Peggy. So, thank you. Thank you.
Well, Florida State L.A., our, and...
There's a really nice article in the Independent on your agency.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Yeah, the mutual.
Yeah, I finally got to read that today.
Yeah, it's, uh, well, there's kind of two factions. We have our, the mutual insurance company, and then we have the agency side, they're under the same roof, and...
That's okay.
Yeah, it was, you know, we aren't quite cooperative like that was in that section, but, uh...
But, yeah, still a nice board.
Yeah, well, thank you. Been around a long time.
Yeah, I did not realize there was that word.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Have a good, have a good winter, if you're in Florida. Naples, you can find my number. We should have dinner.
Thank you. All right, I think we're down to claim, or committee report.
All right.
Drop the book, right?
Yep. Okay, officially, uh, past Monday the seventh, we did have an LEC meeting, we did not have a forum, so, but we did have good discussion. About the gist of that meeting. That's all I have for this past week.
I had no meetings this week.
I had no meetings, uh, but I would tell you, I got a text from Dial on Wednesday that they were at, uh, sixty-two eighty was the hub, going to ten thousand, I can't remember the, here it is. Um, they're at sixty-two eighty feet and headed for ten thousand, seven forty-five. The goal is to be done in three weeks. So Wednesday, I drove out there, uh, when it was nice, they were at sixty-seven hundred, so they put about five hundred, around five hundred feet in, which they were having really good luck. They're having, that laser is just, the bottom is, looks really nice. That was the night that it was supposed to start raining, and it pretty much started raining, and the sides were, the water was starting to run in, so they buried everything, even buried the end of the pipe, 'cause they didn't want to have all that flowing in. So they put, they got a big cement, um...
Plug?
Plug, that they put in there, and he put dirt up against it, and he said, hopefully they'll be back when it dries up. I go out by there yesterday, but, um, I'm hoping in the next few days. They got all the pipe laid out, most of the pipe laid out in there, uh, got a couple of, uh, what's his name, Jason?
Jordan.
Jordan was out there, um, but it really looks nice, the bottom with the lasers, uh, looks good, so if you get, you're out there, just watch where you drive, 'cause some of them spots are pretty soft, but it didn't, didn't look like they're doing a really good job, so.
Well, if the weather cooperates, and given that we've been getting at it, should be a pretty good time, time.
Right. Well, if we get, they're, knock on wood, Friday is like a chance of rain, but if we get...
This week sounds good.
Yeah, if they get, they, you know, if they get it back, open back up, and he can dig, um, they're putting several hundred feet a day in, that would be, you know, you knock off a couple hundred feet a day, all we need them to do is get to the road and get out of that field and get across the road, then they got the two, they've got it, uh, marked for the two outlets and the ditch, um, then we'll, it's already over underneath the highway, and then we just have that little piece on the east side of one sixty-nine. Hopefully, we're making progress.
How deep are they in the ground right now?
They're still fourteen feet, and that's what he said, it comes up pretty fast towards the, towards that road, but until, and that's what's taking so much time, they gotta move so much dirt, and you gotta bring it back wide enough so that the guys are safe down in the hole, and, but the difference in the dirt is the, the clay, and it still has that sand, so, I mean, they're digging as wide as this room down here.
Wow.
It's... They do have the intakes marked for the ditch, then? I think he, he said they were, Jordan said they were, they had it all situated for, but I don't know if they're marked, we might look at that, I didn't look at it, seeing things they did. I'd like to look, 'cause I know the one that they did on a hundred and ninety is was pretty close to the road.
Yeah. All right.
We got that funny poster.
So, that's all I have.
Should probably talk to them.
I'll go out and take a look, see if they have any to explore.
On Friday, the eleventh, um, our Region Five Iowa Workforce Development Group met after our big meeting with the others, 'cause we're, we're trying to formulate a plan to where we can get, 'cause the meet, we know the meetings are gonna be in Storm Lake, so we've got to try to get people that are in our region to participate, because if they ever do decide to start closing down workforce centers, we want to make sure that Fort Dodge stays open. So we're hoping that by having business people, so Prestige is gonna, Prestige, I always say it wrong.
Prestige.
Prestige, I always do that wrong. Prestige, we're trying to find somebody from there, Rick's gonna talk to, Rick Rass, who's gonna talk from there. I'm gonna see if Molly Barnes from High Cap will still do it, I'm hoping she's on it now, that she'll do it, and then Clarence is hoping he has several people over there at, um, Laurenti's, 'cause, so we're, we're trying to formulate a plan so that we're not, so when we go over there...
Taking the ball, wouldn't it?
Right, when it's, 'cause the twenty-fourth, when we go over there, we have to start setting the, um, twenty-eighteen in place, we have to get a, um, we're calling it the CLEO, C-L-E-O, one, the one person, but whoever takes on that job, we were all talking about that, it's gonna be huge, it's gonna be almost like, that might be just the one committee that one person is on, because it's, it's gonna be a huge undertaking to be the, um, chair of that, and, yeah. So there's a lot, kind of, worked through and everything with that committee. But it's doable, and it's, it's gonna be a good thing, because we had fifteen regions before, if we go to six, there's eleven million dollars that, instead of being dispersed in it between fifteen regions, it's gonna be dispersed between six. So there's, there's pros and cons up, you know, both ways. We just want to make sure that our area's represented.
Mentioning the meeting for that training on Wednesday is with the ministerial board, or the, uh, mental health.
Allison.
Allison.
Yep, I texted her, she knows when it is. I asked her, she's gonna, she hasn't gotten back to me yet, but I know they've had a lot of mental health stuff with them, so.
They're gonna do a training for the ministerial board at, um, first one is gonna be at the Methodist Church is where we meet. And then we popped, or I just said, if we decided that this was something good, and a couple of the ministers replied back and said they'd been through it once, it's a really good training, so they highly, uh, advise it, recommend it. So we, um, would either open it up to more people, um, however they want to do it, so I'm hoping Wednesday I can sneak through that meeting to...
Good, that'd be great, yeah. I know Pastor Kathleen said she was very interested, she's the, um, pastor, yeah, so she was really...
Perfect.
Yep, so, that'll be a good thing. The workforce development meeting was here, or Fort Dodge? Fort Dodge, it was, I'm sorry, Fort Dodge, yeah. At that East Campus, have any of you ever been over there at that East Campus? It's nice.
Northway, yeah.
Yeah, it's really a nice area, place to have meetings.
That's where Region Five used to be, with...
Oh, was it?
Yeah, now we're meeting down to Cop Shop houses there, down on the interstate.
Oh, okay.
Nice place over there. Did it?
Yep, that's it, I'm sorry, that is all I have.
I did not have anything official last week. And remind everybody, if you're going to the luncheon, you should have already had your notice in, luncheon for the Congresswoman and Senator, I suppose, Saxton and Bryan Brink will be there, that's this Thursday. Country club. Hopefully, I get to go to it for a minute. You got anything for us?
No, that's it.
That's it?
Wow.
Okay. We are done, 'cause we, the other one's supposed to have been at ten, now we got it inside, so.
Okay.
Perfect.
To adjourn?
I would second her most.
We got a discussion.
All favors?
Aye. Polls?